I'd like to call the reorganization meeting of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 6th, 2021. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon FiOS Channel 32, and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as one.
This is a relatively formal meeting for the Board of Education in which we reorganize. It's the only meeting of the year where a board member, and actually elected board member, is not the chair of the meeting at the start. I am Bob Colavita. I'm the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, and at this time, I will be conducting the meeting, reporting the results of the election, and assisting in the election of the Board President, at which the newly-elected Board President will take over the meeting and take over as Chair. So at this point, I'm going to briefly review the election results from November 2nd, 2021. On that date, there were three seats that were contested for the Hopewell Valley Board of Education. There were two seats in Hopewell Township and one seat in Pennington Borough. The Pennington Borough seat was won by Alexander Resnick, who ran unopposed. He received 745 votes, and he will be taking over a three-year term for Pennington Borough. For Hopewell Township, there were three runners for two seats, and being reelected to the Board was Deborah Lindthorst with 3,210 votes, and being elected to her first term, Jacqueline Genovese, also elected to a three-year term with 3,535 votes. Just some points of note, Hopewell Township had a 47% turnout, and Pennington Borough had nearly a 50% voter turnout, which is pretty good for a municipal election. Okay, what I'd like to do now is we're going to give the oath of office, and we're going to give it in two pieces. First of all, I have two of the newly-elected Board Members in the room tonight, and we're going to do them at the podium, and then we have one Board Member who is remote tonight, and we will be doing that through our Board Attorney, Paul Green. There's a different requirement for the, from the state for a remote swearing-in. So if Deb and Alex will join me at the podium, we can get their swearing-in done. Okay, I'll face you, I'll face you guys here. You try to keep up with me here.
Oh, we're together, okay.
Just, just a little humor. Don't say, "State your name." I, state your name.
Alexander Resnick.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States
In the United States.
And this state
And this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, I
I.
State your name.
I, Alexander Resnick.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member
For the office of member.
Of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education.
Of the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS-19
Pursuant to RS-19, colon 4-1 Colon 4-1.
And not disqualified due conviction of a crime
And not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed
Or offense listed.
An NJSA
An NJSA.
18A
18A.
Colon 12-1.
Colon 12-1.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, I can get you out some there.
This is where I need my glasses.
Right there.
Yep. Doesn't matter. Jeff, welcome back.
Thank you.
Alex, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Jackie, can you hear us? Jackie, can you unmute?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I gather you can hear me okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening. I'm Paul Green. I'm the Board Attorney, and do you have in front of you the oath that Mr. Colavita sent to you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So I'm going to administer the two oaths to you now. So repeat after me. I, Jacqueline Genovese
I, Jacqueline Genovese.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States
And the Constitution
And the Constitution
Of the State of New Jersey
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear
And that I will bear
True faith and allegiance
True faith and allegiance
To the same
To the same
And to the governments
And to the governments
Established in the United States
Established in the United States
And this state
And this state
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me.
I, Jacqueline Genovese
I, Jacqueline Genovese.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I possess the qualifications
That I possess the qualification
Prescribed by law
Prescribed by law
For the office of member
For the office of member
Of a Board of Education
Of a Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified
And that I am not disqualified
As a voter
As a voter
Pursuant to
Pursuant to
NJS
NJS
19, colon 4-1
19, colon 4-1
Nor disqualified
Nor disqualified
Due to conviction of a crime or offense
Due to conviction of a crime or offense
Listed in
Listed in
NJS
NJS
18A, colon 12-1
18A, colon 12-1
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially
And justly
And justly
Perform all the duties of that office
Perform all the duties of that office
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
So help me.
So help me.
Congratulations. I now need to see you actually sign the oath in front of you, if you have it.
Oh, I have it electronically.
Okay. Then we're gonna have to arrange to have it printed out and have you sign it at a certain occasion.
Okay.
But the important thing is we've administered it. We do need to get it in writing to further records.
Okay.
So we'll have to arrange to have you print it out later and sign it, and I can work with you on that.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry about that confusion.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Jeff.
The next thing we need to do is actually open the meeting. That was before we opened the meeting, just doing the thing. So I'm gonna take a roll call now. Ms. Driver. Ms. Genovese.
Here.
Ms. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Herbert.
Here.
Ms. Lindthorst.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Present.
Mr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Suicki.
Here.
And Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Okay. The next part of the meeting will be the election of the Board President. I will call for nominations for the Office of Board President. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for Board President. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote of yays, nays, and extensions. Once a president has been selected, I will step down as temporary Chair of this meeting and pass the gavel to the newly-elected president, who will then conduct the election for the Office of Vice President in the same manner. Okay? And at this point, I'd like to open the nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2022 calendar year.
I would like to nominate Deb Lindthorst.
That was Andrea?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for President of the Board of Education? Okay, hearing none. At this point, I'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of Deb Lindthorst being President of the Board of Education for the 2022 year, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay. Deb, congratulations on your reelection to President of the Board of Education, and I will return.
I get my side back. I get my side. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I will call for nominations for the Office of Board Vice President. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for Board Vice President. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote of yays, nays, or abstentions. Now opening for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Jess Grillo for Vice President.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will ask all in favor to vote now.
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? This will conclude the election of officers for the 2022 calendar year. And now, we will move on for the report from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Trese.
Thank you, and I want to welcome our newly-elected Board Superintendent of the Board of Education. And I'm very excited to work with you and welcome, and scale up to the level today. Also, I'm excited to welcome our new staff member, Marcia Samson, who will be joining us soon, and we'll talk to her a little bit later, but she's joining us today. I don't know what experience or welcome or performance or come with a wealth of experiences and what area it's in. It doesn't seem like I have that much experience. Hello, can you hear me? There we go. Okay, so for those, so that you can hear me, again, I wanted to welcome our new Board Members here that were elected today. I'm excited to continue to work with this Board. I'm also excited to welcome our new six-through-12 Supervisor of Special Education, Marcia Samson, who will be Board Approved tonight. So we're happy to have her join us. She comes with a wealth of experiences, and so we're happy to have her join our, have her join our team. I'm gonna keep my statements today brief. I just wanna kinda highlight some of the things that I had in my community update. For those who weren't able to read it thoroughly or who had questions, I wanted to make sure I touched upon some of these things. But we do have a lot to do this evening in preparing our new Board Members to move forward and to train the rest of the Board. So again, I'm just gonna make a few comments based on the communication I sent out. First, I wanna thank my, my school nurses and my administrative team, who worked tirelessly night and day over the winter break, to track and, and contact trace and help us make decisions about what was best for reopening of schools. I also wanna take, thank the County Superintendent, Executive Superintendent, and also the other Superintendents in Bursar County. We are all and still continue to circulate on text messages, communicating to interpret the new policies that, that were, the new recommendations that came out from the CDC, and also trying to get communications as quickly as we can from the New Jersey Department of Ed. Right now, the New Jersey Department of Health is still out. They should be back in session tomorrow, but working with the new guidance and understanding what it means to schools and what our abilities are to go into remote learning versus in-person learning. It is still my belief, and the belief of this school, the school board, I believe I do have your support, that our kids do best when they're in-person learning. We know last year, we had students that had academic learning loss. We did better than most districts, but we did see some learning loss based on our scores that many of you received over the, the holiday break. We also had students that struggled emotionally and staff in in-person learning, in the isolation. We know our kids do best health-wise when they're in-person. When we were in session, I know there were some concerns about lunch and recess and all of these things when we started the year, and our track record has been excellent. We have not had in-school transmission at lunch on our playgrounds this school year. We've done a very good job. Yes, we have had kids that have gotten COVID, we've had COVID cases. Those have been outside cases. We've been able to track them. With this new variant and the, the rise of these cases, we are all kind of, you know, caught off-guard in the level of the way the cases duplicated, tripled, but we are seeing that most of these cases are mild, that we, that we're successfully able to manage and isolate students that we're concerned about, and to return them back to in-person learning as soon as possible. As I told you on Friday before we went into winter break, it was my intention to bring everyone back if I could. That's dependent upon my staffing, though. I need to have healthy teachers who are able to come in and to successfully do their jobs, and their case is also a way on whether or not we can have a building open or not. We do not go into these decisions lightly, and they do require the collaboration of the Health Department and the approval by the New Jersey Department of Ed and the State Health Department. So again, the decisions are made in collaboration with all of these entities, and I have to get permission to close schools. I do not have the ability to close a whole district without their approval, and I have to demonstrate that I'm not able to successfully stay in-person, because we all know that in-person learning is what's best for kids. So I'm asking that parents remain flexible. I will communicate as soon as I know of any changes that we need to make, and we're going to always, always lead with what's best for kids. So if there are kids that need to be here, and that happened today, even in this high school, based upon their programming and their needs, we're going to have them in, just like we did over the last two years. So know that, that we're here and always leading with what's best for this community, what's best for kids. These decisions are not easy, and the month of January is going to be a tough month. We're gonna have some highs and lows, but I know if we all work together as a community, we are gonna get through this, and I'm gonna do the best that I can to avoid any lengthy closures unnecessarily. And I'm fully committed, and I know my staff is, and we have a proven track record that we can keep kids safe. When we're in-person learning, we don't have these large number of cases. We're able to mitigate, control, we have mask-wearing, we're, we're socially distancing. That doesn't happen over breaks. That doesn't happen when they're, you know, on these extended times off, and that's where we see the case increases. So we know that kids are best in-person. It's best for families, it's best for parents that need to, to get out of the household and go to work, and me sending everybody into remote learning, and now parents may have to collapse and send kids to other people's households does not really get to the heart of the problem. So again, I'm gonna do what's best for your kids, I'm gonna keep you safe, and if we feel like we cannot do that, we certainly are fully prepared to go remote at any one of our school sites. The Chromebooks came home today for our elementary school students. F-parents, if you need any help for tech support, please feel free to go to our helpline. You can go online and always find my latest updates, the helpline email address, and any information you need about free testing, which is offered on Tuesdays here in the district, is available for you on my last, my last communication to the community. So again, I will keep you abreast of everything that's going on. We are working on streamlining our communication to you, including the dashboard. There are many lists going on between what the Health Department is getting directly communicated from school, from local physicians, and what our nurses are keeping. So I wanna make sure before we keep adding to that dashboard that we have the exact numbers and the correct numbers, so I'm meeting with my principals to try to streamline for that, that for you, and also not to inundate you with the constant communications as we were doing. That communication system served us well when our numbers were low. I think now it's becoming overwhelming, and it's not exactly doing what we intend to do, which is keep you abreast of, of the situation in a way that's, that's done in a clear, a clear message. So we'll work on streamlining that. There may be less communications, but we're going to do it in a way that you can check that board and see in real time what's going on. I just have to streamline that. So give me a couple of days. And also, I know that I have a few emails that I was not able, more than a few, that I was not able to respond to today. Know that I'm not ignoring your email. I plan on fully getting, getting that taken care of tomorrow. I had to go around to all my schools today and make sure that where everything was running as I expected it to. And I can report that your kids were in class, learning, and they were happy. Our teachers are doing the phenomenal job that they always do. So I just wanted to thank them for their professionalism and their commitment to making sure that we continue to provide a premium education for your students. So that, with that being said, I'm gonna pass it off to, back to our Board President.
Thank you, Dr. Trese. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Trese? Any Board Members? Okay, seeing none, we'll say thank you. I do not have an official report for this evening. I will just say, reiterate some of what Dr. Trese said. I wanna thank our staff for their diligence over the break. I know a lot of folks didn't get much of a break, particularly our nurses, who have worked day and night to help us during this pandemic, and we owe them a debt of gratitude for sure, and to all of our administration as well, but particularly to you, Dr. Trese, because you also did not have much of a break and have worked 24/7, and, you know, we really do appreciate your leadership and, and your clear communication with the community and your dedication, and, and also for the fact that you're always looking out for the safety of our, our students and our staff, so thank you. And then finally, I just wanna say thank you to my fellow Board Members for putting your trust in me for this year, to serve as President. I really appreciate your faith and trust, and I look forward to working with all of you in the year to come, and, and with Jess as, as my Vice President again. And with that, we will pass off to Mr. Green to provide our ethics training for us.
Since we don't have a clicker, I am going to be just asking our tech people to move along on each slide, so, next slide. So, good evening. Very briefly, the School Ethics Act is an act that has been adopted because of the need for public officials, especially in the education area, to reflect the public trust and to conduct themselves appropriately. Next slide, please. Keep going. So to whom does the act apply? Next slide. Board Members, managerial employees or officers of the School Boards Association and school administrators, such as your superintendents, your principals, et cetera. Next slide. The Code of Ethics itself, there's two pieces to it. The Code of Ethics only applies to Board Members. Next slide. Why do we review the Ethics annually? Well, it's a good idea, but it's also mandatory. The regulations require that we must annually discuss the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics at a regularly-scheduled public meeting, which is what's occurring tonight. Next slide, please. Keep going. The School Ethics Act itself, next slide. There are two sections. Yes?
The slides aren't changing for those of us watching online.
Oh, thank you. This is about the third time I've had a Zoom session where that's occurred. I'll have to try and figure out why they're not, we're seeing them change here. We may have to keep it that way. Section one are the statutory prohibited acts, which we're gonna just briefly go over. Section two is the Code of Ethics. Next slide. Boy, this is gonna really test my vision. So the prohibitions in the statute basically prohibit an interest in a business organization which would interfere with the proper discharge of the school official's duties, attempting to use the position to secure what are called unwarranted privileges, acting in your official capacity where you or a member of your immediate family or a business organization in which you have an interest has a direct or indirect financial involvement with the district that might impair your judgment and independence of judgment. Next slide. Or where you have that type of a situation where you have an interest, you may not represent any person or party any person or party in front of the Board of Education or in any matter pending before the district. However, that does not apply to your right to represent your own child in a particular proceeding. Next slide. Now the Code of Ethics. This applies again only to Board members. The first one, very importantly, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of ability, race, creed, color, sex, or social standing. Probably the central component of the Code of Ethics that can form my, confine my action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Those are the essential duties and responsibilities of the Board of Education and of its members. Next slide. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow Board members to see that they are well-run. The Board of Education does not administer the schools. You have a superintendent and other administrative professionals who do that. The Board's obligation and responsibilities to set policy and to oversee the operation to see that the schools are in fact well-run. Next slide. To prove a violation of that particular section, one must show that the respondent, in this case, the person charged with violating the act, gave a direct order to school personnel or became directly involved in activities or functions which are the responsibility of school personnel. So in essence, what happens is you step into the role of an administrator and insert yourself too far into the management of the district. For example, in one case in 2005, where a Board member asked for copies of SAT reports directly from the Guidance Secretary without going through the superintendent, inspected lockers on his own in the boys' locker room, and actually instructed staff on the supervision of students. Those were all found to be essentially putting your nose in where you shouldn't be putting it, put it bluntly. Next slide. Next, Section E. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education. I will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. Individual Board members do not have any authority on their own. The only time you have authority as a Board member is sitting at this meeting, these types of meetings, where you're participating as a member in a duly constituted Board meeting or where you're functioning on a committee level. Other than that, you have to be very careful not to make promises to anyone, not to take any action on your own that essentially might compromise the Board, and we'll take a look at it later and later, a few cases where that occurred. Factual evidence for that includes evidence that you made a personal promise or took action beyond the scope of your duties as a Board member, and that by its nature, that had the potential, it doesn't actually have to compromise the Board, just have the potential to compromise the Board. Next slide. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. Very important that you maintain your own independent judgment, that you not be swayed by outside groups. You need to think for yourself and form your own opinions. Next slide. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information. So very important, you will hear confidential matters often in closed session. Those must not be revealed to anyone. You really have to keep those to yourself. You can only discuss them with the administration and other Board members where appropriate. And providing accurate information is also very important. If you do provide information to anyone, you do have to make sure that it is accurate and truthful. Next slide. Section I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. You have an obligation to protect and support your administrators, your teachers, all of your staff. For that type of a charge, what the regulations talk about is evidence that you took deliberate action which resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, or harming school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Next slide. Very important here, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, i.e. your superintendent, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Oftentimes, Board members run afoul of this. Any complaints that come to your attention, next slide, either need to get referred directly to the superintendent by the Board member, or there is generally a consensus that you may direct the constituent to reach out to the superintendent. My recommendation frankly is you notify the superintendent of it, that avoids any issues. But there is a body of law that says that you may go directly to the, either go directly or have the constituent go directly to the superintendent. The important thing is you not get involved in that complaint. You must refer to. Next slide. Who can file a complaint? Anyone. Any person may file a complaint. There's a six-month statute of limitations for complaints, which means after six months, the SEC will not consider it. Next slide. I just said SEC. That is the School Ethics Commission. It's not the Securities and Exchange Commission. They are the only entity that can determine whether a school official's conduct violated the act. The Board of Education has no authority to investigate whether a Board member has violated the act. Only the SEC can do that. And you can also ask them for an advisory opinion. So if you have a question about what, whether a particular action might be a conflict of interest or run afoul of the ethics laws, you can actually ask the SEC for an advisory opinion about your own or another Board member's proposed course of conduct. Those are not binding. They are only advisory. However, they are considered persuasive evidence of how the SEC would rule if a particular matter came before them. And if you have an area where you think there's a question, it's often best to get an advisory opinion from the SEC to avoid any issues. Next slide. What are the sanctions for the violations? They are reprimand, which is the lowest level of the penalty, censure, which is a more formal, higher designation of disapproval, suspension, the SEC can suspend a Board member, or removal, which happens on rare occasions if the conditions are egregious enough. Next slide.
Paul, I think we have a hand up from Anita. I think she had, wanted to ask a question.
Oh.
Anita?
That was for previous, uh, the previous slide advancement.
Do you want to go back?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
You can also deal with questions at the end, too.
Thank you.
Keep it in mind, you can ask it at the end. Next slide, please. Free speech issues, because we often get the question, well, I have a First Amendment right to express myself. The fact that I've been elected to the Board of Education doesn't mean I've given that up. And that is true, you do, but there are limitations to that. You may not disclose information which is inaccurate, which is confidential, or which has the potential to compromise the Board. You should not publicly criticize staff. I will say, you know, there are cases which have upheld a member's right in certain circumstances to criticize the leadership, but you have to be very careful, and you're really well advised not to do that, that you basically are required to support your administration and your other staff, and any criticism that you have should be dealt with frankly behind closed doors. Next slide. A member shall not represent his/her personal opinion as the position of the Board. There's only one spokesperson for the Board, that's the Board President. The superintendent is also the spokesperson for the District for non-Board-related administrative matters. Individual Board members are not permitted to express an opinion on behalf of the Board of Education. You can express your own opinion, but if you do, it's very important that you make a disclaimer that contains two components. One is that you are speaking as a private citizen, and two, that the opinions you have expressed do not represent those of the Board of Education. Those are very critical. So you are free to write a letter to the editor, write an op-ed, but you have to make those two items very clear. You're required to make that disclaimer. That's also in your Board policy. Policy 0146 in your bylaws contains these provisions. Next slide. Couple of, few cases that have come down in the past couple of years that are interesting. Nazir versus Patel, Piscataway Board of Education. In that case, one of the members of the Piscataway Board and members of the Township Council put out a flyer asking constituents to vote for certain candidates in the municipal primary and indicating that the complainant in this case, who was a former Board member who was running for a municipal office, was part of a radical group intent on changing the party, the Democratic Party. They claimed that this was protected speech. The problem is, the Board member's picture with his signed name and the reference to the Board of Education appeared on this flyer with no disclaimer. And the SEC had no trouble finding that without a disclaimer, the Board member had violated three provisions of the Code of Ethics. It was private conduct beyond the scope of duties, and it had the potential, and in fact, did compromise the Board, surrendering independent judgment to a special interest group, in this case, a particular faction of the political party, and failure to provide accurate information. So this Board member was censured. Next case. Hadrinsky versus Fosset, the Hasbro Heights Board of Education. This was a Board member who had a really ugly Facebook posting with incendiary and racist memes and videos, statements such as diversity equals white genocide. And the complaint claimed a violation of Section B of the Code of Ethics, that a person who espouses explicit racial bias anonymous cannot be entrusted to make decisions in the educational welfare of students. While the SEC had some really choice words for this Board member and his code, his course of conduct, they found that because this complaint did not cite to a particular decision that the Board member had made contrary to the educational welfare of children, and the Board member had not taken any action that obstructed the district's programs and policies, they found that there was no nexus between the Facebook page and the membership on the Board of Education, and therefore, this in fact was not an ethics violation. Again, they were very, very critical of the Board member, but they found that they had no authority to take any action because here, it was a First Amendment expression that did not actually have any connection to the role as a Board member. Next slide. Christopher Truston, Randolph Board of Education. This was a Board member who wrote an op-ed in which he endorsed four candidates for the upcoming school election and opposed one other candidate, who of course is the complainant in this case. And he had a disclaimer that he was writing the endorsement on his own personable behalf, and the opinions were his own. He admitted he did not seek prior approval from the Board. The Administrative Law Judge, these cases typically are sent to the Office of Administrative Law for a hearing. The Administrative Law Judge in this case found that his disclaimer was not sufficient for a number of reasons. A, he made multiple references to his position on the Board, talked about Board matters generally, used, a lot of the time he used the words "we" and "our," indicating that he was essentially speaking on behalf of the Board. And most importantly, he failed to make clear that the opinions expressed were not those of the Board. His argument was, well, it's obvious it was my own opinion, I didn't say that, but the ALJ, the SEC, and the Commissioner of Education all agreed that in the totality of the circumstances, it created the appearance that the entire Board had endorsed certain candidates and opposed others. Because of that, this conferred an unwarranted advantage on the candidates endorsed. The actions were outside the scope of respondents' duties as a Board member, and they had the potential to compromise the Board. The ALJ recommended a reprimand. The SEC felt it was not sufficient. They imposed a penalty of censure. The Commissioner concurred with the ALJ. He said, well, at least the Board member tried, he made an attempt to represent the views as his own, even if it was insufficient, and therefore, he set the penalty as a reprimand. Next slide. Flares versus Jeong, West Windsor Plainsboro. This is why you need to keep things confidential. Board member received a message from a parent regarding an alleged incident that resulted in the discipline of a student. Did not name the student, but there were other identifiers in there. He forwarded the message via a social media platform without comment to his family members. One of those family members forwarded it to others, and of course, it went all over the place, and eventually made its way to one of the students involved in the incident. Next slide. So the ALJ found that the Board member had violated the confidential provisions of Section G, that basically, that information allowed that information to get out to the public and to be disclosed to countless others. The fact that it was his personal email account was irrelevant. The ALJ recommended a penalty of reprimand. The SEC felt that was not strong enough in this case, that this was a clear violation of the obligation to maintain confidentiality and impose the censure. Next slide. Okay, now we're going to do our quiz, as we always do, just, you can just kind of, nobody has to answer this, just say to yourself what you think is true or false. So number one, a Board member would violate the Code of Ethics by actively participating in initial and/or exit interviews for staff members. Next slide. Oops. You know what, you have to start, we actually have to start the slideshow here because that's the only way you're going to see the answers. I can give them to you. Hopefully, people will start seeing the slides on the display. So the first one is true. The, the Board member would violate the Code of Ethics for Board members. There are a couple of opinions of this from the School Ethics Commission. They hold that this goes beyond the scope of a Board member's role, and that by actively participating, you would in effect be acting as an administrator or in an administrative capacity, and therefore, that's outside your scope as a Board member and would violate the act. Can the Board members on the Zoom see the, the slides changing?
Hey, Paul, while we're waiting, um, could you, would you, could you talk a little bit about censure and reprimand and what they mean?
Yeah, I mean, you know, a cynic would say, what's the difference really? Because at the end of the day, they're both a slap on the wrist. It's a question of how, how hard you get slapped. A reprimand is kind of a caution. A censure is considered to be a much stronger disciplinary action, if you will. At the end of the day, unless the SEC removes you or suspends you, they're both similar in the sense that they're both disciplinary reprimands or admonishments, but a censure is considered to be a higher level. It's considered to be more, more of a disapproval. It has a consequence, it gets published, it has to be, you know, discussed at a Board meeting, it gets distributed throughout the community, and it's basically a much stronger admonishment, that, that what you've done is much more serious than something merely deserving a reprimand. Also, this will factor in if there's, one hopes it won't happen, but if there's a subsequent ethics decision, complaint against an individual, having a censure on your record and then being accused and found guilty of a similar violation later will make it much more likely that you will be removed in terms of that. So it's more a matter of the optics of it, if you will, of, of a true level of admonishment in terms of your conduct. Obviously, you don't want to be reprimanded or censured, but a censure is, is really a much stronger admonishment.
If I'm not mistaken, either, either one of those penalties affects the district's CUSAC.
Yeah. Yeah, that can have an impact on your CUSAC, absolutely. Because that, your conduct as a Board member impacts on the Board management side of that. Exactly. Next slide. Okay, a Board President violated, this is the President of the Board. It's in low eyes, but I won't say anything further. Violated Section I of the Code when he posted a blog which included comments about a teacher in the district that implied she received the job due to her brother's political activities. This is a Board member talking in public about a particular identified teacher. She was unqualified for her position, alleged that she did not want to resolve contract negotiations, posted pictures of the street where she lived, referred to her as a greedy bastard and implied she was a bully. Next slide. So that is true, and in fact, in this case, the President was suspended for six months for that type of conduct. And frankly, there's some question why they didn't even remove the individual at that point. Next slide. It was a violation of Section C of the Act. This is not the Code of Ethics now we're talking about because this is a principal of the middle school in a district. So he's not subject to the Code of Ethics, but he is subject to the statute, which has certain provisions that we looked at before. Section C of that Act, middle school principal, was also the mayor, had relatives employed in the district. During his mayoral address to the community, said, as an educator, I have to vote for the school budget, and I hope everyone else does, too. And even though he said, as an educator, next slide, the SEC found false, it was not a violation because he was acting in his role as mayor, not as, as role as middle school principal, and that there was actually no violation of the statute in his advocating for passage of the budget. Next slide. Please do not do this if you get pulled over. A Board member violated Section E of the Code when, after being pulled over, she told the police officer she was a Board member. a police officer she was a board member, used profanity, and threatened to call the township administrator. Next slide. True. The SEC found, and the Commissioner agreed, that the board member's sole purpose in essentially explaining that she was a board member and then threatening to call her acquaintance, the township administrator, technically the village president, who was essentially the mayor of this municipality, were in fact blatant attempts to utilize her office as a board member to try and persuade the police officer not to issue her a summons. The SEC recommended a six-month removal for this. The Commissioner found that was too harsh of a penalty, but he did suspend the board member for 30 days. Next slide. "It is a violation of the Act for a board member to also serve as an executive officer of the PTA or any other PTA executive officer position." We had this on last year, but I think it's always important to point this out. Next slide. That is false. There is no ethical conflict of interest in a board member serving as an executive order of the PTA. Obviously, you have to be very careful in serving on the PTA not to reveal confidential information, or to in other, other fashion, act outside your, your role as a board member in terms of over, trying to over-exercise your authority as a board member. Next slide. "It was not a violation of Section B of the Code for a board member to post on social media derogatory comments about the Black Lives Matter movement, as well as references to the state attorney general as turban man and an African-American woman as a rat." Next slide. True. Similar to the case we just looked at a minute ago, here they found that although these are obviously reprehensible comments, there was no connection between the expression of speech here and the board member's service and actions. There was no action taken that, that brought the board into the picture. The fact that one is a board member apparently is not sufficient in and of itself when people make these kinds of comments to, to trigger a violation of the Ethics Act. There has to be something further. There has to be some action that brings the district into it, or that has a negative impact on the educational programs in the district. Next slide. "Board member was found to have violated 18A12-Section G of the Code by inadvertently replying all to an email that included not only the board, but the parent who brought a complaint to the board. In the reply, the, the board member expressed concern that he felt the board did not adequately address the parent's concern. It was inadvertent. It was a mistake." Next slide. "But it was also an ethics violation, because the fact that you didn't intend it doesn't change the fact that by replying to all, this person let confidential information out to the parent." So one of the things I always say is do not reply to all, ever, because sometimes there may be blind copies on there that you don't know where they're going to. And there's another issue, which is if you start replying to all on board matters, like a discussion among board members, you might be actually creating a serial board meeting, which could be a violation and probably would be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. So you want to be very careful not to get into back and forth discussions with more than a quorum of the board on any kind of board matters, because those only can occur at a board meeting. The president or the superintendent can send information out to board members. That's not a problem. The problem is replying back to everybody. Next slide. "Board member violated E and I of the Code by asking the Director of Curriculum whether she was interested in the superintendent's job." Next slide. That's true. That was a violation of the Code. The board member had no business going to an employee and seeing if that employee wanted to take the superintendent position. It is not a board member's function. Next slide. "Board member who is currently a member of the NJEA in another district can vote on the final contract with the local association once the salary guides have been developed." Next slide. That is true. Once the final numbers are put in place, at that point, there's no longer a conflict of interest. Prior to that, there is the potential for the public to believe or see that, or perceive that the board member has an interest in increasing the settlement in one's own district, because then presumably, the negotiations in that board member's home district, where that board member works, will look at the settlement in, in the district and perhaps grant a higher settlement, which would then benefit the board member. That's the theory behind it. Once everything's done, that goes away, because now at that point, you, you can no longer really influence the process that's done, and therefore, it's not a conflict. Next slide. Bonus question. "A board member can review a staff member's file, A, only with approval of a majority of the board, B, without board input, C, upon notice to the board and administration, or D, if there is action pending before the board with respect to that employee." And the answer is, next slide, D. There must be some action pending before the board with respect to an employee before a board member can see any part of an employee's personnel file. You can't go on a fishing expedition. You can't ask to see a file unless you, as a board member, are being asked to act with, with the board on a particular employee that matter for that employee. Thank you. Next slide. Now we can answer questions. Anita had one before?
No, it got answered. It was earlier in the deck. Thank you.
Anyone else? Adam?
I'm new, so this may be a silly question, but...
Alex, just make sure you speak right into your, you have to get right on top of your mind there.
Push the button?
That's it. There you go.
Okay, cool. So if a constituent comes to me with a complaint, is it accurate for me to state that I'm legally not allowed to comment on the complaint, and the constituent needs to go to the superintendent?
Yes.
As a, as a legal matter?
That's permissible to, yeah, and you should. You should do that. As I said, you do one of two things, either you tell them that, or you refer to the superintendent. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. We appreciate it. And Bob, did you get all your forms back? You need members to sign that.
Yeah, so board members who are here, I gave you a receipt of Code of Ethics for school board members. If you could sign that and send it over to me. Board members who are remote, we will make sure you get to sign the acknowledgement of the Code of Ethics when you return. But again, we always enjoy Mr. Green's presentation. I always like the questions to see if I get the answers right. It's been, it's a tradition for us to have Paul come on our reorg meeting and I have to go through it. And if there's ever any questions that you have regarding the Act, feel free to reach out to me, and I can reach out to Paul to have your question answered.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thanks again, Paul. We appreciate it.
My pleasure. Delighted to.
So we will move on to the consent agenda. There's a number of items on consent. Some of them reorganization actions, others are our annual appointments, and I will request a motion to approve the consent agenda items that have been marked by the asterisk, please.
Second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. We do have one item before us tonight. Jess, I don't know if you wanted, were you going to take this one?
Yep. So tonight, we have two personnel appointments, which you'll see in your agenda. First is the appointment of Mercedes, Mercedes Sampson. Is she still here? No, I don't, she had to leave. She was here, but, so we are appointing her as the 612 Supervisor of Special Education effective March 4th, and then we also have the appointment of Patricia Blair-Bone, is that you pronounce it, as the Special Education Teacher Literary Specialist effective March 25th. Do we need a roll call, though?
We need a motion first.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll do, I will do a roll call on this. Just wanted to thank the board for considering this. This is just because our, our next business meeting is over, almost a month away. We wanted to give these folks a chance to resign and, and get here as soon as they can. Okay. Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Genovese?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Res, Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Sawicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Lindthorst?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Do not believe we have any items of old business to bring before the board this evening? In terms of the calendars, I think we're just approving our, our general regular meetings.
Right, so we'll get a, a motion and a second for the calendars. What we're doing on there, the only items that are on there are the meetings on the 24th of January, the 31st of January, and the 14th of February. Once Deb goes through her appointments, committee chairs or committee liaisons will meet with their chairs and set meetings before the, the 24th board meeting.
So I will request a motion to approve the January 2022 and February 2022 calendars as attached.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Any items of new business to introduce this evening? All right. Seeing none, we will move to our public comment period. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting, so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open. Anyone hiding back there that I can't see? Going once. Public comment is now closed. And I would like to request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. It's a record. Under an hour, guys.